I call to order the City Council Committee meeting of the committee of the whole meeting for February 27, 2024. Clerk Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember O'Rear.
Here.
Councilmember Rube.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember O'Shea.
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Here.
Please rise as you are able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each member of council has received a copy of the minutes from our Committee of the Whole Meeting of January 23, 2024. Do any council members have any corrections? I have one. Clerk Clark, if you would, correct the date at the top of the page to, say, 2024 instead of 2023. Any other corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as amended. At this time, it is time to call our signees forward for citizen comments, and we'll begin with Erin Predmore.
Good evening. I'm Erin Predmore. I'm the executive director of Greenville Connects, which is a local transit advocacy group here in Greenville County. I do have some maps for you guys for the Route 601 if you'd be interested, if I can pass that over to the manager. Thank you. Make sure you all have that in front of you as we talk through some of the data that we have around the transit for your community. As I mentioned, I'm the executive director of Greenville Connects, which is an organization dedicated to expanding transit in Greenville County. I wanted to share with all of you some information to help you with your funding decisions for the 601 Simpsonville route. Some highlights I want to share with you for each of the stops. Some of the most popular stops within your community in the last year was South Street and Industrial. You had 877 flights, which means people getting off there. Main Street and Watley, that was 1,644 people out. North Main and Palan was 612. Butler Road, which I believe, yep, that was 754. That's how many people got on. And at the hospital, you had 313. Your biggest stop, though, was the 510 and 601 connector. You had 8,647 people going through that stop. And why is that? It's because this bus route here through Simpsonville connects your citizens with the broader Greenville County community. Regional connectivity is happening all around us, and it's really important to make sure that your citizens are connected to jobs and growth and all the good things that are happening in our community. It's important for you to be able to connect to the rest of Greenville, and you're an important part of that chain of that connection. I wanted to share with you, our staff has been riding the 601 through the last week or two and met a lot of the different citizens here in Simpsonville. Wanted to bring you some of their stories here tonight. This one is an email from a man named Roy who lives here in town. He says, "My name is Roy. I've been using your paratransit bus for about seven years now. I wanted to take a minute to tell you how much this means to me. I'm disabled, and I don't have a lot of money. I want a fixed income, and the majority of my disability check goes to rent and food. This bus is pretty much how I get around, especially to see my doctors, which I have to do a lot. Without it, I honestly don't know where I'd be, probably stuck in a nursing home, and that's not something I'm going to think about. This bus lets me take care of myself and gives me a sense of independence, which is really all I have left at this point in my life. I've tried other ways to get around, like the Medicaid ban, but waiting for over two hours after my appointment just to get picked up is no fun. Greenville buses are always on time, and knowing I can rely on that means the world to me. The drivers are friendly and always willing to help. This service is super important to me. The worth of just getting from point A to point B is my way to stay independent, to make sure I'm looking after my health without having to depend on others too much. I'm not from here originally and have no family here to rely on for assistance. If I didn't have this bus, I'd lose a big part of what makes me feel like I'm still in control of my life. I just want to say a big thank you to everyone who makes the paratransit bus happen. It's a big deal for folks like me. You're doing something really special, and I hope you know how much it's appreciated. Thanks for listening and for all you do. Sincerely, Roy." So as you guys figure out the next steps here for the Route 601, just remember that you've got citizens like Roy who depend on it to get his doctor's appointments and medical appointments to be a part of the community, and you have people who are connected to jobs. About 17% of people who are not participating in the workforce right now say that their major barrier is lack of reliable transportation. As Greenville continues to expand and has more frequency, you guys are going to get more of that each time as well. Thank you very much for your chance to speak to you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Reagan Tessenhorfer.
I wait for that green light?
No, you go ahead and say your name and address.
Okay. All right. I'm sure you need to be in trouble. Okay. So, good evening. I think you have the opportunity to come here and speak to you. My remarks will be regarding the bus service in Simpsonville. I hope what I say will help you understand how vital Simpsonville connector is to me and my family, as well as many people like us, and influence you to vote to keep the bus service going. I moved here to Simpsonville with my two sons in July of 2023 and intend to make this city our forever home. When choosing where to relocate, access to public transit was one of the deciding factors. Previously, we lived in the country. No services and opportunities for my autistic son were limited. By using public transportation, my son has been able to experience a level of independence and freedom unavailable to him before. He uses the bus every weekday to get to and from his work training job in Greenville at the Vocational Rehabilitation Center. In case you aren't aware, the Vocational Rehabilitation Center is a service that helps individuals with disabilities gain the skills necessary to matriculate into a mainstream work environment. I'm a single mom, and we are a one-card family. The bus service is discontinued, and he cannot attend work training. His future will be severely limited. I understand the city of Simpsonville is being asked to contribute $42,000 to continue bus service in that funding eighth year. However, this is a small price to pay for Simpsonville to tap into a well-established transit system with an annual price tag in millions. To put this into perspective, $42,000 is the average price of a really nice car. Greenville offers Simpsonville access to a fleet of vehicles for that same price tag. Without this vital and cost-effective form of transportation, some Simpsonville residents who would no longer work because they can't get to work may be forced into a life of poverty. It was stipulated in the last City Council meeting that the bus could be used to move homeless people into our city. However, I would argue that this is a minor concern compared to the likelihood that Simpsonville will add to its own homeless population by removing public transportation. My son is just one of the many people who uses the bus. They use the bus to get to work, to get to the store, and to access medical care. For these people, the bus is a vital service. Simpsonville is a state that empowers its residents to make better life for themselves. I hope the City Council continues doing this today by voting to keep the buses rolling in Simpsonville. Thank you for your time and consideration. I also have articles from the New York Times where they talk about a Harvard study where they link transportation and poverty, not having transportation and poverty rates. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last person for public comment is Ms. Travis Brock.
My name is Travis Brock. What else do you need? Yeah, I just.
Screen, please.
Okay. It's 44B Voice Springs Avenue to 9607. I might not repeat what the previous two people said because that's what I was going to say. But Simpsonville has shopping centers or a couple of that. Pretty much different scenery from what Greenville has. So, and then plus, like, the previous two people, there's a lot of people that work. My son works. They don't have no license, and it'll cost him about $200, $200 a week to get back and voyage from Greenville to here in Tennessee.
Thank you. Thank you. Concludes our citizen comments. Item six, staff reports. We'll start with item 6A, Community Relations Specialist, Justin Campbell. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Council, you have my submitted report. One of those items is an agenda item at the conclusion of the meeting, so if you have any questions about anything else other than the litter prevention program, I'd be happy to answer those.
Council? Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 6B, financial report, our monthly financial report. Christine Farino, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few highlights from the January financial report. General fund revenues for January were $7.7 million. Revenues collected year-to-date were $11.6, which is 50% of the budget. January expenses were $1.8 million. Expenses year-to-date were $12.2 million, and that's 52% of the budget. Sewer fund revenues for January were $342,000. Year-to-date is $1.8 million, and that's 84% of the budget. January expenses were $105,000. Year-to-date is $829,000, and that's 67% of the budget. Hospitality and accommodations fund revenues for January were $396,000. Year-to-date is $3.2 million, and that's 89% of the budget. January expenses were $1 million, or just over $1 million. The expenses year-to-date are $2.2 million, and that's 72% of the budget. The Public Works Enterprise Fund revenues for January were $377,000. Year-to-date collections was $475,000, and that's 32% of the budget. January expenses were $151,000. Year-to-date expenses are $580,000, and that's 47% of the budget. Have you answered any questions you need?
Council? Councilmember Rube.
I'm not sure. You have this. If you don't have it now, let me get back to me on it. How has our expenses increased, by what percentage, over the last few years with inflation? Is that, are we seeing a big difference in that from 2022?
I'd have to go back and look at, get an exact number, but, I mean, I think we've seen a gradual increase. I don't know that it's been crazy, but I could get you some numbers.
Okay. Yeah, maybe the previous two Januaries. Just wanted to compare. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Director Farino.
Thank you.
Item 6C, City Administrator Report. Admin Graceley, our City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I'm happy to make this report to you tonight because I feel like I have exciting news about some personnel changes and a couple of staff members here that some of you may not have met yet, and certainly one that none of you have met yet because today was her first day. So, as you read through my report, you'll see that Jason Knudsen, who was our previous planning director, resigned his position in November. He was here through about mid-December. And so, I started looking for a replacement for Jason's position. We advertised with the Municipal Association of South Carolina, the South Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association, and we had excellent candidates and did interviews. After much deliberation, I came to the conclusion that John Derby, who was previously our staff planner, would be an excellent planning director. Most of you are familiar with him. You've heard him give reports. John, if you don't mind standing up. John has, John was actually the first person I hired back in 2018, and I will tell you that he has never failed to rise to any challenge or assignment we've given him. This is actually, this will be his third role with the city since he joined us in, I believe, May of, maybe April or May of 2018. He does an excellent job. He has great rapport with all of the staff, and I'm thrilled that he accepted that role. So, in order to fill John's vacated role as staff planner, Charlene, if you don't mind standing, we have hired Charlene Carter, and today is her first day, and she has extensive experience in public service. She has previously worked for, as the Town Administrator in the Town of Blacksburg, where she did a lot of zoning. Prior to her public service, she worked in the private sector for an engineering firm doing CAD and drafting, so she's going to be great when it comes to planner view. She's also worked as a city clerk, so just extensive experience doing a lot of plan review zoning, annexation requests, special projects. I think she's going to be incredibly valuable to the city as a whole, but definitely to me in helping with special projects and grant writing. So, I'm thrilled about that. Moving on to the Art Center, many of you know because I believe Melissa sent an email out, and then you probably read it in my report prior to that. Melissa Sturgis is retiring to spend more time with her family, and she has vacated her position as Art Center Manager, or will next Monday will be her last. In order to fill that vacancy, we have merged an existing position with the Art Center position to create an Events and Cultural Arts and Events Director, and that person is Lisa Evers, who most of you know. If you haven't, you will meet her soon. I don't think Lisa's here, so we'll have her come to a future meeting for those of you who don't know her, or you can stop by the Art Center anytime. She's been training with Melissa for a couple of weeks now, getting the lay of the land, and she will start that position officially on March 5th. Will be her first day in that role. Melissa did a wonderful job getting the Art Center up and running and getting us, you know, building our reputation as one of the premier arts centers in the upstate and already has exhibits planned out for the rest of this calendar year. We now have theater groups and other artists coming to us requesting to have an exhibit or to rent a studio space or to do a performance on the stage. So, it's no longer necessary to have somebody chasing those people. They're coming to us now, and we're thrilled about that. And what Lisa brings to the table is an amazing capacity for organization and handling a lot of different tasks. As the events coordinator, which is a role she's had for many, many years, she handles special events that happen out at Heritage Park and renting those facilities to people and organizations who bring those events into the park. So, she'll continue that with the Art Center. The gymnasium renovation is scheduled to start on April 1st. It's going to be about a four-month project, so pretty soon the gym will be available for rental. So, she'll just be doing much of what she's already been doing, just focusing some of that attention on the Art Center as well, and she will be permanently located at the Art Center in Melissa's office. With that, you have my complete report. I'll be happy to answer any questions about that, if you have any.
Council? Councilmember Rogers.
Question regarding the Main Street, Festival Street area. I know we said that we're going to remove the power lines there. How far along Main Street is?
That is just on South Main Street. The only poles remaining on South Main were three in front of the slice down to Trade Street, and so those have been removed. We actually used some set aside funds that we have with Duke Energy for utility, for underground utilities, and private property owners at the old Fix It and Fill It and the Slice paid the other half of the cost of doing that. So, it actually didn't cost any taxpayer dollars to do that. Those funds are very restrictive, and they're not immense funds. It's very limited funding. So, you know, it would be nice if we could do that all through downtown to get those overhead lines down, but that's multi-millions of dollars to do that. But, yeah, we were able to accomplish that on South Main without any costs to the city.
Thank you. Council? Administrator Graceley, I see under the stormwater heading that you included the thing that we discussed about coming up with a higher standard for stormwater infrastructure for new construction, which would impact anybody who was developing already, properties already in the city, but also anybody who would add into the city. And I just really want to express my appreciation that you are working towards something that will have something to show Council hopefully soon that will let us increase the standards that cause people who build things to build them higher up away from where the water can get to and also better, higher standards for stormwater retention so that we don't make things any worse for our existing citizens, and this does not impose new rules on people who already have property, you know, developed. This is not something that's going to make a standard that causes something to come out of their pocket, but I think that this is a good move, so I look forward to what we have coming there.
Yes, we're welcome. We're going through our due diligence now on that to make sure there's no negative impact to oppose this, but essentially what we're trying to do is increase the standard for stormwater infrastructure to handle, from handling a 25-year storm event to a 100-year storm event. So, it would require larger upsizing of pipes and larger retention facilities to manage onsite stormwater for new development.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Administrator Graceley? Catherine, here.
Yeah, on that note, I believe Malden has undertaken a study on their stormwater issues and invited public comment. I've been involved in that, but with this suggestion that you guys have for increasing stormwater, would that also be something we could look into, is maybe have enough study on it from people that really know stormwater?
Yeah, I think we can certainly see which funding source Malden was able to tap into and apply for funds to do that. Or, you know, if we see that the application is highly competitive and we may not get funding, I can look at potentially including that in the next budget cycle for the city to pay for that.
Thank you. Council? Thank you, Administrator Graceley. Our department heads from the other departments that have not come forward to speak tonight are here and available for counsel to ask any questions or deliver any comments. Counsel? Councilmember O'Rear.
Hart's right. Are they here? Wake up, Riley.
I'm here. Nothing really exciting. The numbers we get about participation, any way to get like a baseline number for folks like us that are few of us that are very new, because those numbers, though, they look good, I don't know what they look like compared to last year, year before. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so I'd love to see, just to see the trend, because I'm a huge proponent, being a Simpsonville leader myself back in the day, so love the participation. Plus, as the rate of growth we have in the city, are we getting equal participation percentage from the growth in the, what I can do for you, Councilmember O'Rear, it's like this Farino's doing, I can run you some back numbers with some reports we've had, but I can, I can tell all of council, this spring season, our numbers are the highest numbers we've had in my 28 years. We're blessing it seems. We've had a limit in numbers because of our facilities can't handle. Well, we can put more and more out there, but you will not get a quality, we'll be playing Sunday, on Sunday afternoons, and I'll tell you it won't do that, but we plan to get those numbers for you, give you a little bit more detail for it. Yeah, it's just one year back. That's why I get a little comparison baseline number to see what the growth looks like. Just great. Absolutely. We're growing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council for staff? All right. Thank you all for being here this evening. You are welcome to head out and enjoy the rest of your evening unless you have business coming before council on the business items. So, next up is our business items, and I want to point out that, as is always true with Committee of the Whole, items that are voted on tonight are simply being moved to the business meeting agenda scheduled for March 12th. So, a yes vote is not a final decision. A no vote would be because it would not go on to the business meeting agenda. Item 7A, Welcome Center Budget, and we have the President/CEO of Simpsonville Chamber of Commerce, Allison McGarvey. Ms. McGarvey, would you deliver your report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet that I prepared for you all this evening, there are a few different Welcome Center reports that I will briefly go over. The first page has a report that shows the current fiscal year, June to July, with numbers as of December 31, 23. So, roughly, exactly half of the year so far is reflected in these numbers. The column, first column, Chamber Budget, shows what we budget for the Welcome Center, then actual, and then over on the right-hand side, you see what percentage of our budget we allocate to the Welcome Center. So, for example, our total office-based lease payments, only a portion of that is allocated as a Welcome Center expense based on the percentage of square footage that the Welcome Center area takes up within our office. So, all of that is explained down in the notes towards the bottom, but for the year so far, we're tracking as planned. We've been increasing the amount of advertising that we've been doing in the last couple of years, so you'll see that. I have some information to provide a little more details on that in just a second. Overall, in terms of Welcome Center, the funding has been increasing just naturally as the total ATAX increases over the years, and you kind of see how those, how it gets allocated to the expenses on our end. The second and third pages, the second page specifically, again, just kind of provides an overview of what we do as the Welcome Center, how that functions in partnership with the city, and some of the activities that we do. The parking is split into two different categories. Operational is those things like utilities, rent that I mentioned, and then towards the advertising. So, those are specific advertising initiatives that we do throughout the year that represent 20% of our total Welcome Center funding, and then general operations is the other 80%. The third page shows our proposed budget for the Welcome Center for fiscal year 24, 25. We'll see, I conclude, it's just moderate increases year-over-year, both from, on the revenue side as well as the expense side, but no major changes overall. Any questions on that before I speak?
Counsel?
All right. And then the next few pages just going to show general activities for Welcome Center. We offer newcomer welcome bags to new residents and visitors. We reach those folks by utilizing lists of recent home purchases that we get from one of our partners. We mail postcards out to those addresses each month, and you can see the rough totals for the last several months. In October 23, we mailed out 117 postcards, 217 in November, 167 in December, and then 155 in January. We don't see 100% of those people who come into the asset, but we do definitely see a lot of them. They come in waves. The bags that we give them include our Newcomer Welcome Guide and other publications, as well as little goodies and welcome messages from some of our Chamber members. So, it's a good bag of swag and freebies that people get, plus it gives us the opportunity to share all of their good information on Simpsonville, answer questions that they have, and then introduce them to Chamber members or any other services that they are moving for in the area. I mentioned we mail those to the addresses that we receive from our partner, but we also work with apartment complexes, rental property managers, HOAs, and real estate agents to reach as many people as possible because we know we want to outreach people who are moving in, renting, as well as just kind of moving in within the area. So, we really have a lot of partners that we lean on for this particular program, but it's been really successful over the last few years. We also mail basic relocation packages to people who are potentially planning to move here. We receive these addresses from a partner as well, plus people call us and contact us directly and ask us for the information. If they just want a directory and not a full relocation, a big package, we mail those for free. If they do want a larger package, we do charge for postage, but we can totally customize the information that's in there, so we just work with the person to figure out exactly what they want them to make at work. And then between walk-ins and phone calls, I'd say average two to three a day. Some days it's insanely busy, and then some days it's slow, so two to three, I think, is a safe bet, and that gives, again, a range of people who are asking general questions about Simpsonville, who are outsiders looking in to either move or visit, or people who aren't here just need general various miscellaneous information about the area. The next page shows some examples. The next page shows some examples of advertising that I've done over the last 12 months or so. And I also passed around just one example each of some of these actual magazines or the hard copy to show you those as well. The Newcomer Guide is ours, so the entire book is relevant to Simpsonville. But then the other two I've bookmarked with a post-it note, the pages and the sections that are Simpsonville-specific for you. Our Newcomer Guide, we distribute 4,500 of those each year. It includes a Holdout City Map that is very, very, very popular. You can test those out all day long. So we make sure to have them available in a little box outside of our front door so people can grab them even when we're not open. But then they're also available in the office as well as many other locations around town. And that's the publication that we mail as part of those relocation packages. Then we also do ads regularly with the Relocation Guide. That one, we do a whole-page ad, and then I do the editorial and share photos with them for the Simpsonville section. For South Carolina Living, we do two, roughly two, just regular advertising spots per year. I've been targeting April and September each year to, for April. The example is the larger one there. It included summertime events, the farmer's market, the concert series at the park, the In-N-Out State Festival, as well as our community events that we do like Halloween and Christmas Parade. So even though that seeing, people are seeing it in April, it's showing them all the many things that they can come to Simpsonville to experience throughout the year. And then the September ad was that smaller one, for example. That was just a general app, again, to show how great Simpsonville is and to encourage people to come here for a weekend visit or to even consider moving. This year, I did a whole-page spread in the Community Journal's publication, Explore 864. It was a beautiful publication that they do, and the, the whole page plus site contributed a little bit to that editorial as well. And then I'll also be doing another digital campaign in the next few months, April to June. We do that one through Summit Media. And I worked with them before for a digital campaign that was in the Christmas season of '22, so a year ago now. And it was highly successful as well. We used it to promote the things that are going on in Simpsonville around that time, as well as the Welcome Center in general and just the resources that we provide. So for this one coming up, it'll run April to June, I plan and foretend to include, again, some of that summertime event info and just a little more tourism specific types of things in addition to the Welcome Center. And then the last page is our annual calendar for the chambers. You can all see what we have going on. This includes our programming as well as our larger community events, again. So our first one coming up, major event-wise, is our Health and Wellness Fair, which will be towards the end of March. We're doing that one at the Simpson Health Family Y and C.A. We still have openings for vendors and want to let the community know. It's a free event to come for our health care, recreation resources. And then from there, we have golf tournament, sit-in in Simpsonville, and our A-list awards. And then it goes on from there as we get into the later part of the year as well. So many of these are open, or pretty much all of them have opportunities for non-members as well as members. So we want to share the information widely through the community to make sure people know that you're here and welcoming for us. Any questions from me or Welcome Center or any other chamber member?
Thank you, Ms. McGarrity. Motion is in order.
I have a question, just...
We need a motion first.
If we, if we really have a motion on the floor before we go into discussion.
Okay.
Motion's in order. Councilmember Roche.
Mayor, I approve that council approved the Welcome Center budget.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Roche with a second from Councilmember O'Rear. Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rup. Get that corrected. It was Councilmember Rup who gave the second. Member Roche. Okay, Councilmember O'Rear.
Question about, maybe this is something that's, sort of looks simple to me, but is not as simple as I think. The budget showing 40, 80% of what was budgeted from the city goes to operational expenses, 20 to actual marketing. 80-20 split seems a little high on the administrative side when you're using $4 to use the one to market the city. So I didn't know, maybe Administrator Gracely can explain if that's a normal occurrence or if I'm just...
Yeah, so I'll, I'll be happy to give you a little more detail about how this funding comes to be, first of all, for, for those of you who are new to council. This money comes from state accommodations tax funding. It's collected by the Department of Revenue and then remitted back to the city on a quarterly basis. The way the funding breaks down is each quarter, well, the annual budget or the annual allocation that we get, the first $25,000 has to go to the city's general fund by law. The additional 5% after that has to go to the city's general fund by law. And then 30% goes to the Welcome Center. There are very specific rules about who the Welcome Center can be. We can't house it in City Hall without a separate nonprofit entity with its own board of directors. So for, probably since the inception of the Welcome Center, the chamber has hosted that. A few years ago, Ms. McGarrity and I met and talked about allocating a certain percentage of that 30% that they get from the city for the Welcome Center for advertising. And they were very gracious to agree to do that. And so, you know, the majority of it would go to operations, just because you have to think about rent for the building that the people actually go into, the utilities, the staffing, all of those things that, you know, if we were to pull the money out of the chamber's budget and introduce our own Welcome Center, which I would never recommend that we do, because there's not enough money. You know, it's a very small amount of money. In fact, for this year, it looks like that allocation is anticipated to be $62,273. And so 20% of that goes into advertising, which we had agreed to a few years ago. And then the balance of that, Ms. McGarrity can allocate based on her budgetary needs for, you know, their office space and utilities and staffing and other materials that they prepare to hand out, postage, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions, discussion, council? Okay. On the motion to approve the Welcome Center budget, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven yeses, zero noes. Item 7B, the accommodations tax funding recommendations. Administrator Gracely, will you summarize, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We intentionally put this on the agenda after the Welcome Center budget, because these two do tie in hand in hand. As I mentioned, the state accommodations tax that we receive annually, they remit it to us quarterly, but we look at it on an annual basis. After the first $25,000, the first 5%, and then the 30% that goes to the Welcome Center, the remaining budget, the remaining 65%, then is made available to different organizations to apply for that funding to do events. The state law requires that the events relate back to accommodations taxes, meaning events that put people in hotel rooms, you know, encourage tourism, special events that bring people for weekend stays to the city or whatever the event might be. And so each year, there is a special ATAX Advisory Committee that council appoints. And each year, generally in January, they meet and look at all of the application requests. Those typically come in the end of October, that's the deadline that we've set. And so the committee will go through each application, and they will look at the total amount of funding we have available. And usually, not everybody gets what they're asking, because there's never enough money to do that. And unfortunately, some requests go unfunded completely. So what you're seeing on this spreadsheet with your materials are the ATAX Committee recommendations for council to approve for the allocation starting July 1. And I will remind you, too, that, you know, just like we do budget projections when, when we present the budget to you in a few months, same thing with these projections. The revenues are not exact. These are what we anticipate based on trends and what we've seen historically in the past and, you know, what we've seen in our quarterly remittances from the state. So, you know, we, we try to get it as close as we can to the amount of money that will be available, but it's impossible to hit that directly on what we're gonna receive. We're usually within a few thousand dollars. But we definitely don't want to overcommit on the revenue part and then have that funding committed to different organizations and then not have it available after their application's been approved. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. A motion is in order. Councilmember Hutchings.
Mayor, council, I make a motion to approve the accommodations tax funding recommendations.
Have a motion from Councilmember Hutchings with a second from Councilmember Roche. Discussion? Councilmember Hutchings.
I'm looking on the concert series that includes radio, mine, I'm, it looks like we have a significant rollback on, on that one this, this year. Can you tell us what that's going on?
I wasn't in the committee meeting when they made these decisions, but you can look down the blue column and then the gray column next to it and see that nobody got what they were asking for in entirety. And in recent years, I will tell you, this may have been part of the committee's discussion, too. Saffy has been really good about getting sponsorships for that event. You know, they have naming sponsors, stage sponsors, single event sponsors. And so I would imagine they would be able to make up for that. You know, it used to, it was funded entirely through state accommodations taxes. But it's good that now they've, they've been able to secure other sponsorships to help make up that difference.
Okay. Councilmember Roche.
No, I'm looking at the Juneteenth activities there at the bottom. I think I can probably interpret why one line received zero. That is the Greenville Mega Fest. But then the next one is more specifically Simpsonville, the Juneteenth Black Theater Festival, no Dream Diver Productions Unlimited. And I believe that, will that happen at our art center?
Yes.
So am I correct in assuming that that got funded because it is Simpsonville?
Well, I'll tell you what was, what I read in the minutes of the discussion and what I was told by other staff that attended the committee meeting. The Juneteenth, the Greenville event, they were talking about possibly having it at the amphitheater and it's in heritage park. But unfortunately, they don't know exactly when. They don't know, you know, we have hold dates for concerts that affect other events being scheduled out there. And there were just a lot of unknowns. They had no idea yet who the entertainment would be, you know, if the event would in fact happen in Simpsonville, what their total budget was. It was, it was very, you know, based on them having to complete the application by the end of October. They just didn't have as much information as the committee would have liked. First-year events don't always get funded. I don't think they ever get funded in their entirety, but I think part of the reason why the committee's not recommending any funding for that is because there just wasn't enough information.
And then one that was very helpful, and it is Simpsonville Garden Club, a local volunteer organization. So I'm thrilled to see that we are given what we're giving. Do they have a, did they have fundraisers that, you know, we could promote, participate in? I say that because it seems like the need is more as we're doing beautification downtown. And I'd really love to see those planters, everyone rush things all the time.
Yeah. So when we start the downtown project, the planters will go away completely while we're under construction. And then I'm not sure what it's gonna look like when they come back. I mean, it may be that we work with the garden club to create permanent planters that are in place and do away with the, with the movable ones that are out there now. You know, historically, as long as I've been here, we've funded them, usually for the full amount that they request, which has always been in the $2,000 range. I'm not sure where the $3,500 came from, because of course I wasn't part of that discussion with the committee. I tried, we, the city makes a request, too. And so I try not to be in there when they're talking about funding, because I don't want them to be influenced by my presence there. Because we're an applicant, too, just like these other organizations are. But, you know, they, they have no labor costs, and we water the plants throughout the year. So it's buying plant material to put in those planters. That's primarily what they do. And again, like I said, they may not even need the full $2,000, because depending on the construction schedule with the downtown project, those might be removed after one season of flowers. So they may not have the whole year that they have to plant for.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rip.
The outdoor, or sorry, Everything Outdoor Fest looks like last year was the first year that came to us. They got a $10,000. They asked for 30 and got none. Is there a reason why?
So two years ago, they got funding from the city to do the, the inaugural year of the Everything Outdoor Fest. Last year, she missed the application deadline, so she wasn't able to even be considered. And then this year, you know, it was a huge request. The event is not in the city limits of Simpsonville. It's outside of the city, which doesn't matter to us. We don't restrict applicants based on that if we believe there are gonna be hotel stays as a result of, you know, people coming into town for the weekend. And there are no other hotels other than the ones in Simpsonville, because it's not far outside the city limits, but it is outside. I think it was just a matter of the committee had limited funds, and they were trying to allocate those funds to events that are proven well-attended, successful events.
Yeah, kind of. Wanted to see how that, how that went. Can I ever see the numbers? Well, maybe you send them, I'd like to see.
I know that the mayor attended the event two years ago, so he could probably tell you more about it. That weekend, I think we had Country Music Fest happening at the amphitheater. There was another big event happening in Greenville County, and then this event. And so I think it hurt their attendance a lot, just because there were too many other things going on that same weekend.
Their attendance was hurt. It wasn't by much, because it was busy.
It was well-attended, yeah. And it, and it did rain, too. I mean, they had to combat the rain that weekend. But I wasn't there for the event, so I can't really speak to the attendance. But, you know, and you all appoint the ATAX committee members to, to read through the applications, to hear the presentations they do, hear from the individual applicants, and then they collectively consider all of that and make these recommendations back to you. You're not bound by the recommendations. But, you know, I think that they do a really thorough job, and they put a lot of effort into it, so.
Is there any way in the future they can write up something to council to let us know why they made certain decisions they did? I think that's, I don't really see where they budgeted money. I don't have any feedback. You did attend the meeting as well. And I'm sitting here wondering how they come up with it. I mean, there might be viable explanations, but I don't know what those are. If there's a way in the future that they can let us know why they came to these conclusions, it is $70,000 money anyway.
We do have a staff member, and they're taking minutes for the committee, and I'll just ask her to, you know, include all of that discussion in the minutes, and we can share those minutes with you.
Okay, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Counsel? These monies come from the state accommodations tax.
Correct.
And if I understand correctly, there's a disbursement each quarter from the Department of Revenue that comes into the city, and this is how we estimate what we're budgeting for this coming budget year.
Yes.
So when I total up the numbers for '23, '24, I get $88,000. And this year, we're budgeting $70,000. That's a 25% reduction.
So I can, I can help you with that explanation.
Thank you.
Sometimes there are funds left over from the previous year. Maybe someone who was allocated funding didn't use it all. Maybe the event got run out, so they only used a little bit for advertising, and they didn't actually have bands to pay and, you know, stages to set up and all of those expenses. And so that particular year, we had a lot of carryover funding. And so that particular year, we had a lot of carryover funding. Because some of the funding from the previous year had not been.
Revenues are not going down, which would be, I think, unexpected based on?
I think some of the revenues have gone down just because we did have one motel that was closed for a good part of last year. In fact, it may have been all 12 months. I would have to look back and see.
That wouldn't be a 25%.
It would not be a 25%. No, it wouldn't be. But it would explain, you know, maybe three-ish thousand dollars. And then the rest would be that we just didn't have any carryover from last year to bring forward. So this number is based solely on those quarterly remittances.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from council? So on item 7B, motion to approve the accommodations tax funding recommendations. Everyone in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, all opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to the panel. Item 7C, funding for Green Link in the fiscal year 2025 budget. Administrator Graceley, would you summarize, please?
Yes, mayor. I'll be brief because I'm sure you all are well acquainted with this discussion based on the public comment tonight and also the very thorough discussion and presentation that we have from James Keel at the last committee of the whole meeting. Basically, this is putting the item to the business meeting to consider the city's funding of $47,000, I believe it's $47,000, that you would direct me then to put in the FY25 budget to cover the funding to continue the 601 connector.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Councilmember Root.
Mayor, council, I move that council approves funding for Green Link in the FY25 budget.
Second? We motion from councilmember Root with a second from councilmember Hutchings. Discussion? Councilmember Root.
Yes, sir. So I've been thinking a lot about this and getting emails. I appreciate those that showed up and spoke. I personally, I can't in good conscience tell people they don't have a way home or a way to work and back home. So after giving it some deliberation, I also understand the split race taxes to increase this budget. But if you practice the way I do at home, you cut, when you extend your budget, you cut somewhere else. So where I was thinking, and this is just me, I'm not trying to turn anyone into it. What I'm not seeing value in, what I've been paying attention to this last year, is the Zen City contract that will be coming before council in the next couple of months. I think it's a $30,000 to a $36,000 measure.
Twenty-eight, I think.
Twenty-eight. So a little bit more than half. I would ask council to approve this. I think a lot of people use it. Do people, are people going to use it to have a car? Yes. But there's more than not that are using this to get to work, to get to the hospital. That number stuck out to me that Aaron read to us earlier. I don't remember your name because that's my name. I have one, but I got that one. The hospital stops. I wrote it down. More than 300. So those are people going to the hospital that don't have a ride. These are cars off the street. These are cars that people don't have. So I think that we need to pass this. And what I will be doing is replacing, I'll be voting down the Zen City contract to help pay for some of this. I would ask that they would look at possibly looking at raising ticket prices before coming back to us next year. I don't want that to be a burden on anyone as well, but to help incur some of this cost, especially the way with inflation goes. It's 47 this year, is it going to be 53 next year? And we want to be careful with that as well. But I did want to at least offer that to council that there are some ways maybe we could cut to help approve this, but this isn't going to raise taxes really regardless. But I think it is something that, from what I think about, that we need to do. So I just wanted to say that.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Yes, bear with me. So we got a letter from GTA. And I'm assuming that there'll be some form of contract coming that we would sign up to in order to pay funds to GTA over the next several years? Is that the way it works?
They've not requested a contract. This would just be year-by-year funding that I would continue to try to include in the budget. But no, they've not asked for any long-term contract to continue this. And I will say that the city of Fountain Inn is very interested in having that connector route extend into their jurisdiction. And so my hope, I can't say with certainty this will happen, but my hope is that since there's somebody to the southeast of us that wants it, maybe it'll make our cost a little less next year if they're able to incorporate that. Because we'll be sharing the cost of that connector across three cities rather than two.
One of the reasons why I'm asking about going forward contractual agreement because it's $47,000, but there's a line item in here that says, and I won't read all of it. "These costs do not represent the cost of replacement or expansion of vehicles, installation of new bus stops, bus stop amenities, yada, yada, yada." In general, it gives you the cost of a bus. You can read it. And in the end of the sentence, it says, "The local amount needed for a new bus is $150,000 or approximately $12,500 per year, not considering inflation." So it could be inferred that it's $47,000 plus $12,500 a year is part of our agreement with GTA. No, or am I reading that wrong?
What was explained to me by Mr. Keel, who's the executive director, is that they are only asking for operational costs to run Route 601, that it would not include capital expenses.
But it says, "do not represent the cost of replacement." So I just have a concern over time. And I don't disagree with Councilman Root. However, in five years, it's three-quarters of a million dollars. And what's to say in five years GTA says, "You know, that $47,000 just wasn't enough. It needs to be $75,000." And this doesn't look like there's ever an out, especially say Fountain Inn gets it. I know they want it, but if Fountain Inn was to get a bus system and then five years from now, council says, "We have enough."
It'll still be a funding decision that this council makes year to year because there is no contractual obligation for the city to continue it. So each year.
Excuse me. The reason why I was asking about the contractual agreement, if there's one out there, I would hate for it to come in and just say, "This is what you're going to pay, whatever we say."
Yeah. There isn't one, nor have they asked for one, my understanding. And the reason we're here now presenting this to council is because I didn't want to include it in the budget without you all having thorough discussion about whether or not you wanted city resources to go toward that. So this is council making a decision about whether or not you want to do it for this coming budget year so that I can then incorporate that number. Next year, when I present the budget, if you think, if it's increased in any way or if you have concerns about, you know, continuing that, you can consider it again.
Again, this doesn't seem like there's any negotiation room. If GTA comes back later and just says it's going to be more, it just keeps increasing. Lastly, I wanted to ask too about the budget. So is there a way that this could be, again, maybe we can reduce some taxes somewhere else, but can be paid to H or A accommodations or hotel taxes or something like that? I did ask Butch Urban about that when we were riding on the bus and he thought that those funds could be used for buses.
No, unfortunately not. I, you know, I'm pretty familiar with state law and how you can extend those dollars and they're very, very strict about that.
Even business taxes?
Well, business taxes would be part of the general fund, which is where this money would come from.
Okay. And the only reason I ask that is the bus are valuable to certain people. I mean, you could take like Howard Road, the residents we have out there that are in the city limits, they'll never see that bus unless somehow Fountain Inn circles through there. So their tax dollars are actually paying for something that they never see any return on.
Well, I will say that with the paratransit service, they would be able to do that because if they're, if they're disabled or unable to get themselves to a bus stop, the paratransit extends a certain radius around the city.
It extends, if I'm not mistaken, within a half a mile of a bus stop?
Three quarters.
Three quarters. Three quarters? So that's marginal maybe. Anyway, that's all I really had. I just felt it was important for council to understand that these are revenues that are just going to continue forever and ever. It's never going to go away. My revenues are taxes based.
Councilmember Root.
Real quick before I get started, with Fountain Inn, hoping that this could happen for them.
Well, of course, Malden and Simpsonville had to say, "We'll pay for this." And so I would imagine they'll try to work on that throughout the rest of this year and have it included in their FY26 budget. I can't really speak for them. I know I've spoken with their mayor, who is very interested in what Simpsonville does tonight because it's his intention. And I think he's had preliminary discussions with his council. I think they're all on board with trying to extend that service.
Well, being the new council guy, this is probably the first very important vote and something I've looked into a lot. Expressed a lot of concerns at the last meeting, still have a few. I concur with a couple here. Couple things stood out in the letter. 2012, the fare revenues were about $43,500. They dropped to $33,000 in 11 years. And I think Councilman Root mentioned the revenues. That's an extremely small amount of the budget. And when I did my ride along with the Green Link folks, which I really enjoyed, I asked a question, "When is the last time there was a fare increase?" And the answer was, "It's been at least eight years." And to me, you know, I made the point that, you know what inflation's done the last three to four years? It's killing a lot of people. But there's been no fare increase. And that concerns me and I'm with councilmember Pinkerton because you get something started. Historically, we've started a lot of programs in this country and where, once you get them started, it's almost impossible to stop the roll. And the roll can be 47 this year, 77 next year, and then 98 the next year. It's a year-to-year contract. It's a year-to-year thing. And no one, I'm not going to speak for me, I can't speak for him, no one wants to sit up here every year and talk about the same, this same issue because I'm with councilmember Root. I do want people to have this. But I'm also very cognizant of the financial figures here and the fact that on the surface, it looks like there's no real interest in raising revenue via the folks that actually use the system. It's, the interest is raising the revenue from the areas that are serviced, if that makes sense. You know, when I go to the store, I buy something, I get to keep it, it's mine. But here, we're asking the taxpayers of Simpsonville to pay for things they're not necessarily going to use, and that revenue keeps falling. And to me, that decrease in revenue can be nothing but a loss of ridership. And like explained on the bus ride, you know, when you raise rates, it will have an adverse effect on the number of riders. Well, the absolute opposite, the same. You drop rates and more will come. It's almost the point really here, it looks like you might as well just make the service free because that's the amount of revenue that's being raised. And that's a big concern of mine, but I know several were raised. But ultimately, like councilmember Root, Pinkerton said, you know, I do think with the hospital numbers, the paratransit, I do think it's very important for the community. And I'd be like the offset idea. But I do ultimately worry when someone gets used to being able to come and ask for a figure, they come and ask for a different figure and they expect to be told yes. So that's my concern on that. But I, you know, otherwise, you'll find over the years of me sitting here, I'm very big on the taxpayers' monies that are spent, so.
So the only thing I can say to address that is, you know, this body works so much more efficiently than the state or federal government. I understand your concern about once you start funding a program, is that could be in perpetuity. But you all haven't been through a budget cycle yet. I will tell you, the way I present the budget to you is we show percentage increases and then I also show any substantial change from the previous budget to the one that we're proposing. And so you would know that information typically in April. And, you know, if you see a steep increase, then this body could certainly say, you know, you could revisit this discussion. It's not a long-term commitment unless, you know, you see the value in it and you want to continue to fund it and the requests don't continue to increase too steeply. And as I mentioned, my hope, and I don't know if this is true because I'm not in transit, but common sense tells me if Fountain Inn does offer the service and they're sharing the cost with us, it would keep our costs lower. I'm hopeful that'll be the case. But, you know, we'll know probably about this time next year what the anticipated contribution from the city would be for the FY26 budget.
Would it be something, and I know this, I've talked to another council member about possibly having a contractual deal that we produce the funding at this rate for three years, whatever? Would that be something Green Link would be interested in?
I don't know because the way it was presented to us when the mayor and I initially met with the chairwoman and with the director of Green Link was, you know, they work for the city of Greenville. Green Link is, he sort of had, I think he mentioned that here, he sort of has two masters. He has an obligation to the city of Greenville and he has an obligation to that nonprofit organization. You know, we've never been asked to contribute before because the state was able to contribute for this connector route. And then when that funding went away, that's when they came to us late last year and said, you know, "If we're going to continue this connector, Malden and Simpsonville are going to have to pay this because it's not City of Greenville's responsibility to pay it." So I think the best way for me to answer your question is, they do all of this by formula. And so they, I don't think they would commit to any kind of term or to say they'll keep this price the same because what they're passing on to us are the actual costs that remain after all of the federal funds and state funds have been applied.
Thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember Pinkerton.
Sorry, one more thing. Additionally, by becoming a funding partner, this makes each municipality eligible to appoint one member to the Affordable Transit Board of Directors. How is that addressed at this point? You got any idea? Seems like I heard it hadn't been addressed somewhere, but.
So the mayor typically would appoint when there are special, like he appoints Mr. Hutchings to serve in an advisory role with the Simpsonville Chamber. You know, occasionally, there'll be an opening on the council governments board and, you know, municipalities will decide which among us have an appointee for that. So that I would imagine the mayor would determine who would, who would take that place on the board. Or maybe he would want to put it up to council for a vote. That would be up to you all to decide who that person would be.
I think talking to Mr. Keel when he was here, he wasn't clear on whether that was a definite thing or not anyways. So I just wait and see when it comes.
Says it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, but he also hedged.
Well, I mean, you can't hedge on what you're putting down here because he re-hedges it somewhere in another piece of document. And is it a paid position?
These are all volunteer positions.
Anyway, again, it goes kind of back to where I was talking about whether you actually have a contractual agreement because it says stuff right here, but if we're not agreeing to this letter, this is what it says. And it also infers that it's possible another $12,500 a year. So I'd just like to see some clarity on that before our final vote on these things.
Counsel? Councilmember Roche.
So the first glaring problem to me is that the city of Greenville has removed themselves from this equation. And that is the reason that Malden and Simpsonville are now being asked to pay up $101,000 collectively. The city of Greenville has serviced more routes, longer routes, more people, more stops, and they're pulling out completely. I'm trying to figure out how that is fair, that then they come to us and say, "We need $101,000." I'm very tempted to do what Malden's done and say, "Well, you know, Malden's position is that Simpsonville commits to $40,000." you know, Malden's position is that Simpsonville commits to forty-seven thousand, then Malden will contribute fifty-four. I think we should go back to Greenville and say, how much are you willing to contribute? Because I don't believe that Route 601 is the highlight of the bus, of the Greenlink service. And I'm not sure why they're coming themselves to collect this and Greenville city is just able to bow out. So that's one thing. Ridership is another concern because we do represent Simpsonville and Simpsonville only. Is this a service that that forty-seven thousand dollar investment really justifies? I appreciate the email that I got from one lady that spoke tonight. I appreciate a couple of instances that we've been given, but that's three people. And this is forty-seven thousand dollars. I have a problem committing, just like Mr. Pinkerton pointed out, the money to a private business that obviously is not doing well. And we get nothing in return as far as a contractual agreement, any sort of obligation. It seems like they're going to get money with no accountability, and that's never a good thing in government. If we're going to commit this, then I feel like there needs to be some sort of accountability. Right now, there's no contract. There's nothing. They're just asking for a straight-up forty-seven thousand dollars from the city budget. And what are we getting in return? They've even covered themselves by saying this doesn't, you know, obligate us to give you any more covered shelters, benches, lighting, nothing. And that is something that's lacking in the city. I would like to see something for my investment. I think the only covered one is in front of the hospital, and I'm guessing that Prisma has everything to do with that. So I would like to see something in return. It just, it doesn't, none of the numbers jive when there's no accountability. I feel like we're bailing out a private business and they're using, you know, Route 601 to make their numbers happen because the city of Greenville's pulled out. Why? The city of Greenville has an obligation.
Ms. Rashad, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's not factual. The city of Greenville puts in hundreds of thousands of dollars, as does Greenville County.
So on the board, it says the city of Greenville has been funding the governmental share of this route along the Greenville County. The city of Greenville is discontinuing their funding.
They're discontinuing the funding for 601, not for Greenlink, just 601.
Right. But the people that are used, so justification is, it's to bus people to and from Greenville into this part of the county.
601 doesn't go to Greenville.
So you're telling me that people get on the bus in Simpsonville, but they don't go to Greenville?
They connect with another, they connect with another route that Greenville pays for.
Greenville County?
Greenville County and Greenville City pay for the route that this route connects to, yes.
But Greenville, the city of Greenville does benefit from Route 601. If people are coming in to work, they're coming in to shop, they're spending their money there. They're supporting the businesses, the schools, the hospital, whatever they're doing.
So by that logic, then we shouldn't pay into that.
I don't want to debate up here with you. This is my mom's time to speak. We've never engaged in debate that way.
Apologies.
I do, I have some issues with that. And the accountability is what really stands out to me. And whether or not Simpsonville actually has enough riders to justify this expense. Lastly, I understand that Fountain Inn would like to, would like to see us pass this because their future is tied into this. The mayor there has said, we have businesses coming and part of the checkboxes, we mean that we would need public transportation to come this far. And so I understand their interest, but they're not being asked for anything then either. So I just have a problem with shortening this much.
Councilman Hutchings?
I just want to say that this discussion's been very enlightening to me because prior to this, I didn't really know too much about the bus service in general. And I'm very amazed to see some of the figures that came out of this. The demographics were very enlightening. The fifty-four percent of riders are employed, twenty-one percent are actively seeking employment. And I think we're overlooking, a big factor here is economic impact that the bus service has for Simpsonville and all the other areas it serves. My understanding is Greenville County, it's an eighty-dollar, one-dollar ROI, which is pretty impressive. We're looking at people here who are living in Simpsonville and working other places and depend on this bus service to get them there. But another thing that came out of this is I had no idea existed with the paratransit. And apparently, there are a number of people in Simpsonville that are currently taking advantage of that. They're disabled or for whatever reason can't provide their own transportation. Tonight, we had a, we were connecting figures for the stops. I don't have that information. I would like to get that, those figures sent to me, if you, all council for that matter. We received a report from the city. I couldn't open it because it was a it was a report that only the city had access to of Greenville. So I didn't have, actually seen the total figures at this point for ridership. But even at that, we're talking about the fares and so forth and what that costs. I think we're looking at just maybe, the bus service is not a profit generator per se. It is a service to increase the economic well-being of our communities. So I think for all those reasons that with the twenty-three point six million dollar budget, we should be able to find a way to fund this forty-seven thousand dollar budget item.
Counsel?
Okay. So let's start by talking about claims that were made about homeless people in the past meeting. And I just, I just have a question for everybody to consider. Does anyone really think if we get rid of the bus, we won't have homeless people in Simpsonville? And what is it that we really want for the people who are most in need in our community? What we would really like is for them to get out of abject poverty and become contributing members of society. If they're homeless, they don't have enough money to have a car or pay for Uber or get there some other way. The best way to get themselves bootstrapped up is to find a job and get back and forth to that job and start earning money where they can become a contributing member of society. And when asked, when unemployed people are asked, what are the biggest barriers to getting a job? Transportation is tops in the list, even more so than daycare. So I don't think we should be taking away transportation options for our people who most need it. It's part of our affordable housing consideration. I've heard from people in the last few weeks who live here, found an affordable place to live here in Simpsonville and use Greenlink to get to their job in Greenville because they can't afford to live in Greenville. I've heard from people who, it's the other end of that conversation. They work here, they can't afford to live here, and they're using Greenlink to get to Simpsonville to go to work. I've had lots of emails and phone calls. I've heard from Reagan a couple of times for her, and she spoke here tonight, and she brought her son with her. I want to point out who we're talking about here. This is, they're not homeless people, but they have one car in their family. And he is working his way to the bus to get back and forth to work every day. This is a civic-minded person, this young man, because I was trying to figure out, where do I know him from? I know him from coming in and volunteering myself for Simpsonville Cleanup Day. And here he was picking up bags in a vest and a gripper quad to go out and pick up trash on a route. That's where I know that young man from, and he uses the bus. I heard from a guy named, actually, I heard from his mom first, and then mom made him ride. This is a guy who is less able than maybe, than most of us. He rides his bicycle to meet the bus and then puts the bus, puts the bicycle on the bus and rides up to Greenville and uses his bicycle to go to his job at the Greenville County Election Commission. Lives in Simpsonville. He rides two miles to get to the bus stop. I heard from a guy today who says, oh, thank goodness for the bus. My car broke down. I'm using the bus to get back and forth while it's in the shop for repair. Seth Duncan, I forwarded the email from Seth Duncan, the city administrator of Malden, to all of you today. Obviously, Malden supports this. Spoke in person with Mayor McClure from Fountain Inn yesterday. It's been discussed already that Fountain Inn is interested in getting bus service extended to them. I would say that your hope, Administrator Graceley, that this would offset some of our costs is probably dim because the 601 is a full route. It takes one hour for it to make its circuit. You can't add anything to it or you mess up the schedule. It would, we talked about that when we were doing our ride along with the GTA folks, and they said that no, we'd have to be adding another, buy a bus and add another route in order to support Fountain Inn. So probably not going to see an offset in our cost there. But Mayor McClure and his council have been discussing getting this going. If we were to not fund this and the route is done away with, we cut off their chances maybe. Or possibly, we see them go, hey, we'll pay forty-seven thousand dollars and we have the bus drive through Simpsonville between Malden and Simpsonville and not stop here. And everybody who was riding it not have a way to get on that bus unless they work their way to Fountain Inn or to Malden. Ridership is in the thousands per month on this one route, thousands. Over two thousand per month, right? And ridership is increasing. One of the more popular spots, we've already heard this, to get on and off is the hospital. But another one that I noticed is downtown. We have a lot of people who are getting on and off of the bus here in downtown Simpsonville. It supports our businesses in Simpsonville. I reached out to the CEO of Prisma to see if he had staff coming in on the bus or leaving on the bus. He did not get back to me. So I don't have an answer to that one. Certainly, we know we probably have patients who are doing that. I don't think we want to cut off businesses whose employees, they would lose employees and possibly those people could lose their job or have to find a job somewhere else. It's a real pain to find a new job. So I definitely think we need to support that. Greenlink and GTA is not a private business. It is not a business. I heard a council member say, this is not a money-making business and it never will be. It's not a business. We're talking about forty-seven thousand dollars as opposed to each year, we put over twelve million dollars into public safety. Police and fire. I've not used the fire department the entire time I've lived in Simpsonville. Maybe we should get rid of it because I don't use it. Why am I paying taxes, over half of our budget, going to public safety? Because it's not a business. It's a service we provide, okay? This is a service that the city of Greenville had been paying for when the route went from Greenville to Simpsonville and back through Malden, okay? But after GTA added additional service, they doubled the amount of service that Simpsonville is getting. Doubled the amount of service Simpsonville is getting. They split that route into, and so now the route goes back and forth from Malden to Simpsonville. It doesn't touch the city limits of Greenville. Greenville says, we're putting in a hundred K a year under a bus that doesn't even come into the city limits. Meanwhile, we're spending over half a million dollars a year in operating expenses that we're giving to Greenlink. One point four million dollars the city of Greenville gave for that new facility that Greenlink GTA is using for bus maintenance and terminal. The city of Greenville lets GTA use their facilities as offices and lets them use their services, including internet and email and that kind of thing. That's why James Keel is saying he has two masters, because the city of Greenville is putting in so much money to GTA in comparison to the tiny amount that they're asking. If we were in their shoes as the Greenville City Council, we'd be asking the same question. This service is going to Simpsonville and Malden, and they're paying nothing for it. Why are we having to foot the entire bill? Or at least a portion of the bill. They're not doing the entire bill because Greenville County puts in a sizable chunk of money. So, and that is providing a service. As far as inflation goes, who does inflation impact the most? The people with the least. And that's who we're talking about, who need this transit the most. Forty-seven thousand dollars is less than four tenths of one percent of what we put in to public transit. It's less than two tenths of one percent of our annual budget. It's a fraction of the dollars. And Councilmember Ruth has identified a good place. Maybe we can offset some of that expense. All of that, every bit of that pales in comparison to this one item. Paratransit that extends to three-quarters of a mile of either side of the route and is used by citizens of Simpsonville who are disabled. We've heard that tonight. Paratransit provides transportation door to door. You don't get a ride to the bus stop. You get a ride door to door on a special bus for people who are disabled, and they will take you to the grocery store. They will take you to work and back. They will take you to meet your friends for lunch. You might think, oh, I've seen these transit vans around here, Southeastern Transit vans, that they're based out of Simpsonville. Well, they could use those if this went away. Actually, no. You have to be eligible for Medicaid to use those services. So paratransit services people, and by the way, the people who use those services through Medicaid can only use it for their medical care. They don't, they can't ride to meet friends for lunch like they can with paratransit. I think paratransit, we would be doing a horrible thing to take away paratransit for the people who are using it in the city of Simpsonville. And that's why I'm going to vote yes for this. Is there any further discussion or comments? Councilmember Hutchings?
I felt, felt to mention one thing a moment ago. I have a, I do have a concern about the temporal nature of this decision with what some of the other council members have mentioned. If this comes up again next year and it's more, we'd have to look at this every budget year. I'm concerned about that because we don't, we can't put a finger on exactly what this is going to cost us in the future. Is there any way that we can get an estimation of, based on, I think, Greenville goes out to 2030, based on Greenville is budgeting, as to what the percentage increase might be for those years? That's my first question.
I can certainly contact Mr. Keel in the morning and ask that question and hopefully have that information for you for the final vote. I'll forward it to the entire council as soon as I have it via email.
Also, I would like to request that we post these, the materials that we got on the economic impact, the ridership, and the demographics and paratransit. We could post those links to those articles on our city website prior to the vote. I think that would be very helpful, too. I know when, initially, when I talked with people about this, they, some people were negative on it. When they found out what it actually did, they changed their minds. So that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Councilmember O'Reilly?
Just one real quick thing. I would strongly suggest and would really like to get a commitment that we do actually get to appoint a member to the board of directors for the GTA. That way, you know, if we do vote yes for this, we can at least be in the discussions of what the number will be the next years. And the only way to do that is have a seat at the table. So with this, you know, I think. So with this, you know, I, I think, I think that's something that I would strongly suggest that, that we press upon Mr. Keel, that we get a seat at that table.
Just added that to my notes for in the morning when I talk to him.
Council. On the motion to approve funding for GreenLink in the fiscal year 25 budget, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 7D, Proposed Litter Prevention Resolution. Jason Campbell, our community relations specialist.
Mr. Campbell. I think they're, they're not becoming my half-brother tonight. Yeah, I, I just seen that error there. Mr. Campbell, who is just rather than Jason. He, he probably just fell over dead.
Thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm requesting that you consider and move to the March Business Meeting a resolution that memorializes the formation of the Simpsonville Simply Proud Litter Prevention Program and a subsidiary, Adopt a Street Program. Now, you may be wondering why is a resolution needed for this, and it isn't necessarily needed. Uh, this kind of, um, these kind of tasks and responsibilities come under my purview as community relations specialist. I took over doing the two cleanups, uh, citywide that we do annually when I got this position in 2018. But a resolution would codify or create a structure for litter prevention efforts. It's just not enough anymore to do two cleanups a year and move on. Uh, this would be an official commitment, uh, by the city and by the city council to the initiative, and that creates accountability. You know, you're considering this item about, uh, GreenLink, and you have to vote on it in order to make it official. You can't just say, we'll pay the 47K or, or we won't. Uh, this is not, uh, an ordinance. It's not necessarily binding, but it lends seriousness to the initiative, and it creates accountability for me and whoever, you know, in the far future may serve as community relations specialist, uh, that this is a, a serious program. Uh, this will be a two-pronged approach, prevention and removal. I'm considering, uh, adding at least one, possibly two more citywide cleanups per year and the Adopt a Street Program. The basics of that program are individual organization commits to four cleanups annually, at the least, of an assigned city on a street or road. Uh, after the first completed cleanup, they get a sign recognizing the individual organization installed by Public Works and fabricated by Public Works. I already have an Adopt a Street application, a form for reporting results of a cleanup to keep, uh, individuals or organizations accountable, a policy and expectations agreement, and a waiver agreement, uh, both of which, uh, our city attorney, Daniel Hughes, has already reviewed and approved. Um, before I continue, I want to show you the sign that Assistant Public Works Director Pete Lapu, who could not be here tonight, made. Uh, he treated this as seriously as he would treat a, a water main break or, you know, emergency, uh, during a thunderstorm. So I really appreciate Pete, um, for doing this really fine work. Show you guys first. Andy, can you pull a little bit? Public Works Director Andy is gonna hold this for me, so.
Your lovely assistant.
Yes. He is quite lovely. Uh, so this is like any Adopt a Highway or Adopt a Road sign. It says Adopt a Street. Uh, it has our logo, the Simply Proud, uh, to go along with it, uh, and sponsored by. Mr. Lapu also fabricated this, and this is, this is, would say, you know, city council or, you know, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Um, and this way, people get that recognition, uh, that instills in them pride because the whole point, the whole point of this is to instill pride. People often call, um, to complain about litter, and, uh, it, it is an issue. And I want the community to have a thigh in and to participate and, um, take that civic responsibility, um, that this Adopt a Street Program and Litter Prevention Program would, uh, create. Andy, thinking? So the motion would be, uh, moving to approve resolution 2024 01, forming a Litter Prevention and Adopt a Street Program. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. A, a, a motion is in order. Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you. I move that council approve the proposed litter prevention resolution.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rocha with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. Discussion? Councilmember Rocha.
Can't thank you enough. This is awesome. Um, this may be like one of the greatest things you've done as our public relations person. Um, we've needed this for a long time. We've just kind of been inching along. Come out of pride, does a little bit. We do a couple of cleanups. Um, but it's a constant problem, and the heavier the population becomes, the more litter we end up seeing. And nobody wants to live in a dirty city, so I really appreciate your efforts here. I think the incentive-based program is, it's worked in, in a lot of other areas, and I think it'll definitely work inside the city, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And you mentioned public relations. This is also a great PR tool. People drive around and see that the city has the litter prevention program. It's a little bit harder to say that we're not doing anything about it.
Councilmember Roach.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, say the same as Councilmember Rocha. Thanks for this. When I looked at with the graphics, I thought that sign was really cool. Stands out nicely. Uh, I appreciate, yeah, it's, you know, when you grow up in a community like this, you, you don't want to see, I remember seeing some disasters out on the interstate and stuff like that. And people do see, and they do notice, and they do wonder, do they even do anything about this? Well, that sign's gonna say, yeah, we're, I mean, no one's perfect all the time, but we're, we're doing something about this. We're addressing this, and, and I think it's great. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
First, Mr. Pinkerton.
Yes, sir. Uh, yeah, thank you very much. And I live in Point City, so the Point City Community Club does a spring cleanup every year, sometimes fall, which includes cleaning up along Point City Drive from East Curtis down to Earnwood.
Correct.
Even though that's the city's median, we actually mow it and take care of it, clean up. My wife and I picked up trash on that street for the last several years. So I'd be happy to put one of those signs up on Point City and make sure that Point City Community Club is part of that. And as their president, I'll bring it up at the next meeting so that we can apply for that. I think it's very important.
That's a, a great idea, Councilman Pinkerton. That's just something I thought about is, you know, these roads in your neighborhoods are city-owned, but I don't know about bringing, you know, some, a business, big business coming into a, a neighborhood, cleaning, you know, walking on your sidewalks and in your yards, picking up trash. So, uh, I think if neighborhoods, HOAs, wanted to participate in this, I think that would be, uh, I think that would be a great, um, great addition to it.
Thank you.
Councilman Rogers.
I also want to thank you for this. I think this is a great idea. I participated in some of the, uh, trash pickup days, and, uh, they're not, it's not an easy day, and, and it's a little frustrating. At the end of the day, you think, why, why couldn't people just not do this in the first place? So hopefully this will, uh, will do some of that, prevent that. Is there, um, a, um, enforcement element for this as well? If, if those are, you know, it is illegal, uh, to litter, uh, is there something involved, an element involved in that with this plan or?
Well, to make sure that people are actually picking up the litter, there's a report form that they have to do. Take pictures of the volunteers, number of bags, when they, they picked up. Uh, as far as, uh, enforcing the laws on the books about not littering, I do know that the Simpsonville PD, uh, does do that. They do issue tickets. Uh, but part of this larger, uh, the resolution is for the litter prevention program, not just the Adopt a Street. And that, I plan to work with Simpsonville Police Department about, um, you know, putting the tarp on it, you know, on trucks that have trash, doing some type of public information campaign about that, or maybe some type of blitz, you know, for, for trucks who, uh, don't have tarp on their vehicles. So bringing in the enforcement arm of the, the PD and the credibility that they have with the community, uh, is a great idea.
One other thing on, on the sign you, you showed, you showed there earlier. Uh, the sign goes up and that other, the sponsor sign is attached to that. Is that where this works, that works?
Yes, sir. You have our Simply Proud sign, and then below that will be, uh, like city council. So it would say, sponsored by city council.
And that could potentially change from year to year or whatever, uh, time period you have as far as the sponsor goes.
Yes, sir. That sign could be removed and then another sign put in its place.
Council.
Before you vote, uh, Hillcrest High School and the Golden Shire Sunrise Rotary Club have already submitted applications. And Rotary Club has already done their cleanup.
Councilman Rogers.
Also, I believe you also mentioned that the, uh, our, our student council would, would participate in this as well.
Yes, I'd like to have a youth advisory board sign. So every youth advisory board would be required to do, you know, four pickups annually, uh, and that street or that road would just be, uh, be owned by the youth advisory board in perpetuity.
Okay, I just have one comment besides just agreeing with everyone about how, how great this is. Good job on that. But I, I did notice in your materials, um, that you have an example of the Adopt a Street sign and the name, a name sign underneath it, and it's Adopt a Street sponsored by city council, and you've called out city council three times by name. I just want to say, I support that. I think city council should adopt the street. So, thank you very much. I totally support this. All right. Any further comments or discussion? On the motion to approve the proposed, uh, the motion to approve the proposed litter prevention resolution, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. That concludes all of our business items. And with that, if there are no objections, we stand adjourned.